For the Controller, Ms. Paklin.
Yeah.
Mr. Rollins-Steel.
Here.
Ms. Higa.
Here.
Ms. Yamamoto.
Here.
Ms. Hendricks.
Here.
Mr. Keely.
Here.
Mr. Unterman.
Here.
And for the Director of Finance, Ms. Ortega. Ms. Dillon, you have a call.
Thank you. So, to begin with, you have some materials at your seats. There's been some changes to the minutes, it looks like, some dates for both the open and closed meetings, so you have those at your seats. A new board member education item, and a letter from the California Charter Schools Association. Just to let everybody know before we get too carried away that we got to sign 22 letters to members that are turning 100 in November and December.
Oh.
It just always amazes me how many letters we get to sign. The item 12F has been pulled from consent. When we get to that item, we will go over that, and I will ask if there are any other items that want to be pulled, but I wanted to let you know upfront that that's already been requested by a board member. All right. I'd like a motion to adopt the agenda with flexibility, please.
It's been moved.
It's been moved by Harry Second. Is there any other discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Any abstentions? We will play with our agenda as we need to them. Let's start off because we have Rick and David right in front of us, and Jordan, too. Hi.
Yes.
We'll let you start with our funding levels and risks, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, members of the Board. Welcome to early Friday morning. So, we're going to talk a little bit about the risk, the funding risk of our pension plan. And when we mention our pension plan, we're mainly talking about the defined benefit plan because it's, uh, for the largest component of our pension system. So, today, David and Jordan are here to talk about that, and I'm going to turn it over to David in a minute or two. I just wanted the Board to think a little bit. So, if you go back to 1905, in 1905, in the state of Texas, the city of Galveston was by far the largest city in Texas. It was a seaport. It's right on the, it's right on the Gulf. What happened in 1905? A major hurricane came through and pretty much wiped out Galveston. The result of that was that the seaport actually moved inland, it's a risk mitigation, to the city of Houston. So Houston is the largest city in Texas. It's also its main seaport. And so, there's not really a major seaport on the Gulf. It's inland, and they built the Houston Ship Canal in order for ships to be able to go through. So, that was a risk mitigation, and they didn't know whether it would happen again because weather prediction was not very good. But it turned out to be, as we saw this year, basically a 1% risk, a 100-year situation. And so, when we look at our pension plan, we also have similar risk of catastrophes, and we have to try to make a judgment whether it's a 1% risk, basically once every 100 years, or as our Chief Investment Officer has said on Wednesday, is it a 4% risk, which would be once every 25 years? Which is important to consider because our funding plan is a 30-year, basically, goal. And so, there's a risk, if it's a 4% incident, that it will happen in our funding plan. If it's a 1%, it may not happen until years after our funding plan is over. And so, that's what we're going to look at, that's what we're going to try to, we may have some, some ideas for mitigation. I think it's worthwhile if you start considering that if it's a 4% event, is there mitigation that should be taken? Or if it's a 1% risk, maybe we take different mitigation steps. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to David to go over our report on the pension plan's risk, so.
Thank you, Rick. I think it's a very well-done introduction. I think it sets the table for, for the report. And before I start, y'all know Jordan to my left here, I just wanted to give credits where it's due. Jordan came in here and was instrumental in the improvements we made to our processes in the House, our asset liability modeling process. And a lot of the work you saw in the report this year, a lot of it was due to the improvement that he made to our processes. So, I'd like to thank Jordan because he had a critical key in what you're, in the report that you saw this year. So, with this, let's start. So, what I thought we would do, the report is, was quite lengthy. We tried to cover multiple areas, and what I thought we could do today was sort of follow the flow of the report, bring up on the screen some of the key information that was in the report. I'm going to highlight kind of what are the key points are, and if you have any questions, you want to make any, any comments you want to make, feel free to jump in. I want this to be a two-way conversation. And what we have to keep in mind as well is, we are here to talk about risk, but let's not lose focus of the fact that the funding plan was a great thing for our system. We are in a much better place today than we were three years ago. So, we're going to be talking about, you know, what we're trying to do here today is to help you understand where are, you know, what could happen that could put us in a situation where we're unable to reach full funding. But we have to keep in mind that our ability to reach full funding has been greatly improved as a result of the funding plan. So, that's, although we'll be focusing on some of the negative outcome, let's not lose focus of the fact that we are in a much better place today than we were just three years ago. And with this, the first thing I'd like to talk about, we talked about it a little bit last year, and I like to remind you of this every year, we cannot lose track of the fact that as a pension fund, and this is the same for all pension funds across the U.S., all pension funds are maturing. Okay? And a, the easiest way for us to look at our system is you simply look at the ratio of active members to retirees. That ratio has been steadily declining, and it's going to continue to decline. Today, we have about one and a half active members for each retiree. Now, the key to remember is this, there's nothing wrong with this picture. This is what is expected of every pension fund. If you asked someone 40 years ago, "How will our active-to-retiree ratio look over time?" This is what they would have given you as a picture. This is normal, but what we have to understand are the implications of such picture. And the first implication is something we started to see back in 1999, benefit payments exceeding the contributions coming in. So, what you have here is a 40-year projection of what we see. The red line are our projected benefit payments, and you have the three sources of contributions coming to our system from members, the employers, and the state. Today, we have a, the benefit payments exceed contributions by about $4 to $5 billion a year. And over the next decade, we actually expect this to remain fairly stable, and then over time, we expect that amount to increase. Again, this is expected of most pension funds. We will, as you can see, we expect to have this shortfall forever, basically. And there's nothing wrong with it, but we just need to keep into account, especially for cash management purposes. When we talk about asset allocation, we're going to keep that into account as well. Yes?
Sure.
So, David, the, the maturing of pension funds across the world is to be expected. How do you think about improvements in healthcare and life expectancy and this, the, the, the ever, the, the speed at which, the, the number of years that people are living, people are living longer, and that it's happening faster? How do you think about that, and how should we be thinking about that?
So, going back to this, this is something that always worries me. I know we, we tend to focus a lot about investment volatility. I think a lot of focus is put on investment, but every time I hear about some of the medical research that's done, people trying to delay the aging process. I worry about what if in 20 years, all of a sudden, you know, instead of signing 22 letters, you now sign 200 letters a month? It will, you know, it could have, you know, some drastic implications, not only for us but for Social Security and other retirement system. The, probably the good thing here is, if this is going to occur, I would suspect, if you look at history, it's going to happen slowly over time. So hopefully, we can see it happening, but at some point, and again, this is just my personal opinion, if this were to occur, I strongly believe that at some point, someone should be thinking about plan design. Because if we start to see members collecting benefits for 50 years on average, I'm not sure any, that pension plans in place today were designed to provide benefits for all members for 50 years. So, I think we have to keep an eye on it, but the good thing is, I think if it happens, it's going to happen slowly over time. And, and the other implications, when you, when you become more mature as a system, as you know, we collect contributions as a percentage of payroll. And over time, as you have more and more retirees, there's, we showed you this information last year, there's a measure that we, it's provided each year to you in the evaluation report, we call it our asset volatility ratio. It's simply a, a measure of how sensitive the contribution requirements are to investment volatility. And it's all, it's key to look at this because it's been steadily increasing over time. Today, we have, the assets in our funds are about six times the size of the payroll. So, that's why we call that the ratio of six. And over time, as we make our progress toward being 100% funded, as our system continues to mature, in 20 years, we expect to have assets that will be about nine times the size of payroll. And eventually, we expect this to now peak at about 11. Now, if you go back to last year, last year, we told you that we were expecting to see a peak of about nine in about 30 years from now. But last spring, or last February, you made a very important decision for this system. You adopted new actuarial assumptions to reflect increased life expectancy and lower return expectations in the future. But what that did is, we're, we're now, because of this, we are saying we need to accumulate more assets in the fund to, to secure the benefits. But what that also means is that we're now going to accumulate, we're going to have a higher volatility ratio. So, so it was a good thing that we changed the assumptions, but we have to keep in mind, and as we go down the road, we're going to see more contribution rate volatility as a result of investment returns. And the reason why this is key is because as a system, when the funding plan was passed, we have limited authority to set contribution rates, as you know. For the state of California, we can only increase a contribution rate by half a percent of payroll in a single year, which you did last, last spring. Now, think about this. The example we have here is, if we had a negative 3% return, so from us, from, in, looking at it as actuaries, we assume we're going to earn 7%. So, if we were to have a negative 3% return, that's a 10% investment loss from a funding perspective. It's 10% lower than what we expected. The key I want you to remember here is, today, we have a volatility ratio of six. So, if you look, like, if we were to have a negative 3% return, because of the limitations on this, on the increases we can apply to the state rate, it would take us six years to reach the levels we need. In 20 years, when we have a ratio of about nine, it's going to take us nine years to get where we need to go. And about 30, 40 years from now, same event, again, same event, it would take us 11 years to reach the levels we need to achieve full funding. So, that's, you know, as we go along and we think about our asset allocation, and maybe some of the, the funding plan itself, I think we should keep this into account, that it's going to become harder and harder over time to adapt and to adjust contribution rates when we have worse-than-expected investment experience. Now, on the good side is, if we have better-than-expected return, then they're going to impact, they're going to help even more as we go along. So, that's just something to keep in mind. Any questions on this before I move along? Good. So, the first thing I wanted you to see, and we talked about it in the report, is last year was a very good year for this system. You made a great decision in February by adopting new actuarial assumptions. We are much better placed today to achieve full funding by having these assumptions. And in addition, Chris Staff and the investment markets, we got a very good return last year, 13.4% return, and it had a very positive impact on our system. And we wanted you just to see, kind of by looking at the funded status and contribution rates, what kind of impact it had. This is just, again, where we've come from, our funded status going back to the 1970s. You can see it moved quite a bit. And last spring, we told you we were, you know, a bit higher than 60%. And this is the, the projection we gave you last year. If you recall, next April, or next May, when we presented the valuation, we will be reflecting the second adjustment in assumptions that you adopted, will be going to our 7% long-term return. So, last year, we told you, we were expecting a lowering of our funded status when we do this. Because of the 13.4% return, now you see I've added another line on the chart, we actually expect to see a slightly higher funded status as a result of that 13.4%. Just that one year is increasing our funded status by about 5%. So, you can see how a single year of investment return can quickly either push up or push down investment, funded status. Tom?
That's really a function of the fact that it's the first year in your projection, right?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, okay.
And after that, this, you can see the funding levels increasing as we increase contributions and collect the contributions we need toward the unfunded liability, but you can see that the difference between the two lines there, you can see that's simply the, the effect of the return. Now, yes?
And can you plug it back in again? Oh, okay. No worries. I'll go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we shouldn't, it seems to me, make long-term projections based on one year, right? I mean, the idea is that our assumption that we're going to earn 7% is that we're not going to earn 7% every year. We're going to have years where we earn 13%, and we're going to have years where we earn 2%. And so, and so, you know, it, it, taking out one year and saying, "Well, and then after that, we're going to earn 7%," is not necessarily the accurate way to do it, right? I mean, if we have a, if we, I mean, before we had the 13% year, we had a 1% year, right? So...
Correct.
You know, we shouldn't read too much into one year.
That's correct.
That's what I'm suggesting.
Yes, I totally agree with you. And, and in reality, the future is not going to look like, like that white line. It's more likely going to look like what you see on the left side of the chart. But what we want to see is something more that looks like the first half of the chart, which is some ups and downs, but a general trend upward. And that's what the funding plan is helping us to achieve, is it, is a trending, is a trending upward. Before the funding plan, with all of the zigzagging, as you can see, we were seeing a trending downward. So, that's the key here, is what we're looking for is a trending upward. So, now, looking at the contribution rates, the main point I want to make here, and that's something that you're going to see throughout the presentation, is, and that's one of the main messages for all of you today to understand, when we have investment, when we have volatility in our investment return, it impacts mostly only one, it impacts maybe one of our constituents, the state of California. Their contribution rate is the one that moves the most as a result of investment return. And I wanted you to see it here, this is what we showed you in April, as to what we expected contribution rates to be. I won't, I won't spend much time on it, but I just want you to see one thing. Focus on the blue line, and now, I'm just going to show you what the impact of the investment return we had last year did. So, if you notice, it's the blue line that moved, and it went down by 4% of payroll. Just one year pushed it down some. Instead, last April, we told you we expected to have to increase the state rate for the next 15 years, half a percent a year. Now, we're looking at about probably seven years at the most. And we did some calculations internally. We think just that one year of return is going to save the state about $45 billion over the next 30 years. So, that shows you how one year of good return has, can have a tremendous impact, both positively or negatively, on the state. So, that's the main message here today, it's investment volatility impacts the state, and it, and as we go along, it's going to impact the state contribution rate even more.
You've always been pretty good when I, when, when the teacher was making a real important point, and I think you were making a really important point, so I want you to repeat what you just went through, because I need to, you to go over that once again, that slide, that movement, and what that implicat, what that means.
Yeah, so basically, I'm going to go back to the beginning again. When we have returns, either better-than-expected or worse-than-expected, most of that volatility, bottom line, it's going to impact the state of California and its budget. And you can see it here, just the 13.4% we had last year is now resulting in projection of contribution rates that are going to be, as you can see here, 4% of payroll lower than what we thought last April. We're talking about $45 billion less in payment over the next 30 years. So, that kind of shows you a single year of return.
So, as, in years in which performance is, it exceeds expectations, it has a positive impact on the state?
Correct.
In years in which there's a negative return expectation below what the expectations are, it has a negative impact on the state?
Yes, it does, and I will show you this just shortly, and it works both ways.
And David, that state rate is without the 2.5% rate?
That's correct, so that's, yes. Yeah, so Jack makes a good point. These contribution rates here are only to fund the defined benefit program.
Yeah.
The state also contributes 2.5% of payroll each year to fund our inflation protection program, what we call the supplemental benefit maintenance account.
David, you said it was, the impact of last year's performance was $45 billion, the return was 13%, which is six above the expected return. So, would, is it logical to say that for every 1% in outperformance, it saves $7.5 billion?
That's a, that's a good rough estimate.
So, that, that thinking is, is appropriate.
Is appropriate.
And then, on the downside, is it the same thing? So, every 1% underperformance, the cost is about $7 billion?
Yeah, it would have similar impact, correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Yes.
David, could you talk a little bit about why this is? Because it's, it's by design, right?
It's by design, and so, I'm just, I'm going to jump ahead to something that could be a little bit more, I don't want to say more technical, but by design, when the funding plan was passed, the state technically is responsible for what is called the benefits that were in place before 1990. When we do this allocation, and when you look at the amount of assets we have in the fund today, I jumped ahead two slides, but if you look on the left side, we just wanted you to see, if you look at the assets we have in the fund today, how much technically is, you could argue is the, is the share that belongs to the state, and how much is the share that belongs to the employer? Today, most of the assets that we have in the fund are associated with what we call the pre-1990 benefits, the share that belongs to the state. Because of this, anytime we have either good or bad investment performance, it's the employer, it's the state contribution rate that moves. So, you're right, Arina, it's by design, it's because of the rules that are in the funding plan.
David, do you want to go back to the slide?
No, I just wanted to see it once, so I could saw it.
Okay.
No, I'm trying to get it.
Okay, so, the next thing I want to talk about, in the report, we had a discussion about negative amortization. We also had a discussion about what we call the unallocated portion of the unfunded liability. So, what we wanted to kind of show you here, this slide is, actually provides several messages. The first thing I want you to keep in mind on is, if you look at today's unfunded actuarial obligation, just what's in place today, again, by, by design, based on the rules and the funding plan, about 2/3 of the unfunded liability today is the responsibility of the employer, so about $67 billion. About 1/3 of it is the responsibility of the state. And then, so the orange is the employer, the blue is the state, and then, sometimes it's hard to see, but there's a little gray sliver at the top. This is what we call the unallocated portion of the unfunded liability. That actual amount was much greater last year, and actually dropped by almost half as a result of the good investment return. The key here is, this is the portion of the unfunded liability for which, as a Board, you have no authority to adjust contribution rate. So, it's never going to get paid off unless we have good investment returns. The only reason we can say that we'll officially be 100% funded at some point in the future is because today, once both the employer and the state are done paying their share of the unfunded liability, contribution rates are scheduled to go back to pre-funding plan levels. And these pre-funding plan levels that are set in statute are actually greater than the cost of the benefit, what we call the normal cost. So, from that point forward, we would expect, if you want a surplus to build up, that would pay for that un, for that unallocated piece. But the, but the, the risk here is, if we were to have worse-than-expected performance, that share could become so large that, that, that we would never be able to pay it off. So, this is something we should keep into, in mind, and at the end of the presentation, I wanted to, us to start talking about what should we do going forward, especially we have a report that's due to the legislature shortly. That may be one thing that we may want to think about as a, you know, a potential change that... And the other thing I want to point out here, when we say negative amortization, in case you're not sure what we mean, is, it's the fact that although we are making payments toward our unfunded actuarial obligation, the payments we're making in the short term are not sufficient to prevent an increase in the amount we owe. This is what we call negative amortization. And you can see from this chart that 10 years from now, we actually expect our unfunded actuarial obligation to be about $120 billion. And if you look again, 10 years later, so 20 years from now, we expect to be back to the same level we are today. So, just something to keep in mind, although we're going to be making progress toward getting to 100% funded, in dollar terms, you may see us telling you that our unfunded actuarial obligation is $100 billion plus for the next decade or two decades. So, just something to keep in mind.
Thank you. I don't know if this is the right place to start asking some questions about the negative amortization, or whether you're going to be talking more about that and, and the impact.
No, we can do it now.
Okay. I mean, the, the, the risk that we have is that while, while we have negative amortization, we know that, we know that our funded status goes down, and we become much more at risk if there's a protracted period of poor returns or things like that. And so, you know, our, our, once we start getting later on in the process, and we get up to 80% or 85% or 90% funded, we're, we're in much better shape to withstand downturns. So, we have negative amortization for, for how many years?
At least the next decade.
At least the next decade.
Yeah, the next decade, we can expect slight increases in the amount of the unfunded actuarial obligation.
And that, and that's because when we take all the money that's being contributed to the system, and we subtract out what we need for the normal cost, what's left isn't 7%, is not 7%.
That's correct.
It's like 3% right now, right?
Today, yeah, 3%, it's going to increase a bit each year.
It's going to increase a little bit.
Yeah.
But, but to the extent that it's not 7%, we have negative amortization.
Correct.
And I know, I mean, I know, for example, that, you know, the, the rating agency, Moody's, I mean, they're, they, they, they're kind of, primary thing that they look at in pension funds is, are you at least paying enough to avoid negative amortization? So, what, what would it, what would it be like if to, to, would we shorten the amorti, if we shortened the amortization period? Obviously, that increases contributions, but I just, I, I know also that, that there's, as I understand, sort of best practices among actuaries is not to amortize over 30 years, but to amortize over a shorter period of time. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
So, so if we were to sort of apply, and I, and I know this Board does not have the authority to do this, but were we to sort of be amortizing the liability over a period of time that is consistent with best practices of, of the actuaries and to avoid negative, negative amortization, what, what would these numbers look like? What would our contributions go up to, and, and, and how much more quickly would we eliminate the liability?
So, basically, we would need a much shorter funding period. So, right now, our funding plan is designed so that we pay off the unfunded actuarial obligation by 2046, so we have about 29 years left now.
Yeah.
We would need to go down to a funding period of about 18 years. So, we would need to accelerate it by almost 11 years. And we've been, we've been looking at this quite a lot internally, and it has, you know, as you said, it would, it would require much higher contribution requirements. Again, it's, it's like going from asking yourself, "Should I get a mortgage over 30 years or 15 years?" It's, you know, if you can afford it, it's always going to be in your best interest to get 15 years. The same here. If all the parties involved could afford it, going to 18-year amortization to, to, to avoid this negative amortization would, would probably be a good thing, but you were looking, we've looked at it... But you were looking, we've looked at it, like the state of California contribution rate would have to immediately go up to eleven percent of payroll. And the employers would have to immediately start contributing twenty-three percent of payroll.
Twenty what?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Which is much higher than even the statute, the the maximum rate in statute. So it has, and again, the impact on employers is much greater in this situation because of the fact that two-thirds of our unfunded liability today is the responsibility of the employers. So going to a shorter amortization period would have a much, you know, greater impact on the employers than it does on the state. And maybe if it's something that the board was interested in, uh, you know, if we consider that maybe it's easier for the state to adjust to higher contribution rates than it did maybe for the employers, maybe having more flexibility on the state side uh, may help to achieve this. But you you are correct, if if we wanted to go to a shorter amortization period, it has some drastic implications.
It also really dramatically reduces the risks that we face over the next ten years.
It would reduce that risk, yes.
But David, that's one part. I I mean, when we're doing our valuations and coming up with what our unfunded liability is, that's just kind of one part. So I mean, I'm thinking if employers' rates jumped twenty-three percent, that would have a huge impact on wages.
That's correct.
And wages would be substan- possibly substantially lower. Is there, I mean, is that a good trade-off? If if we're expecting, if if our assumption is so much in wages and there's not that kind of growth, how much better would it be to shorten the amortization period?
No, I agree with you. It's it's always, it's a, it's always a delicate situation when you increase contributions. But because when you look at a pension plan, it's only as secure, it it's really secure only if the if the sponsors, the employers and the state can actually afford to make the contributions. So to the extent you raise the contributions too high and it has other implications, uh, you may, you may possibly be, you know, in a worse situation. So it's always, it's a trade-off. You basically have to look to see uh, how much can people afford. And again, I'm not advocating here that we should be going to, I think it's something that we should consider, look into, but.
And I'm not advocating it either, let me, let me be clear. I'm just trying to get information, because I know that the negative amortization is a very risky position that we're in. And so I just think it's useful to to know what the what the alternative would look like. But obviously, we've got a balancing act here.
Correct.
I think when we we when we consider what that alternative would look like, we have to think about the implications on the other assumptions.
Absolutely.
Also. Okay, li- are you done, Paul?
Yes.
Lim?
Thank you, um, just to, uh, just to continue going along the that line of questioning, if you were to raise the employer contribution rate, what would happen to the employee contribution rate?
Right now, the employee contribution rate would be is would be unaffected by any of what we're talking about. Right now, the the uh, the employee, so we have two groups of members. We have the members that are subject to a two percent at sixty formula, and we have the members that were hired after two thousand and thirteen that are subject to a two percent sixty-two formula. That group of members, uh, the only time that they may have to contribute more is if there is an increase in what we call the normal cost, which we expect to see next year, if you recall. Uh, we told the board last year that when we will be implementing the seven percent investment return assumption, we expect the members, these members have to pay more. But when we talk about paying down the unfunded liability, today, that's only the responsibility of the of the state and the employers. The members are shielded from any increases or decreases in unfunded liability.
Okay, thank you.
Beyond the added amount they're already paying for the unfunded.
Correct.
Just be clear.
Correct.
They they did pay for part of that, because of the vested rights issue, they can't increase it more.
Okay. We'll move along. So as you send the report, what we we sort of wanted to show you today, uh, kinda the three of the main risks are, we'll sort of look at three risks in the report. Investment risk, longevity risk, and also the risk of seeing declines in our membership. And what I mostly kinda want you to get out of this today is, when we look at these different types of risk, I want you to see uh, which group is impacted the most? And where do we run out of room in our funding plan preventing us to reach full funding? So we've already talked about uh, investment risk. We showed you what the good return did to the state rate. Now we're gonna show you the opposite. So when we have poor returns, it's the state rate that's gonna go up. So the key here is, in our funding plan, we can increase the state rate by half a percent per year. So we're gonna be able to get pretty close to reach full funding as long as we have room to increase the state contribution rate. So that's what I want to show you. So uh, there's a lot of information here, you're gonna see that quite often today. All I want you to focus really is on the top left, you have our projected funded status. So you can see where we are today. In in the low sixties, projected to reach a full funding by the end of the funding plan. And then we're showing you in the bottom right, a chart of contribution rate, the orange being the employer and the blue being the state. And this is our baseline scenario. It reflects the good return we had last year, and it assumes we earned seven percent each year. Now, what I wanted you to see, I'm gonna go quickly here, we're gonna be looking at what if we were to have a a ten-year period of low returns, what does it do? And I want you to just focus at the blue line, cause as long as the blue line, as long as we have room to increase a blue line, we should be fine. So here's six and a half. We still have room, we reach a hundred percent funded. Six percent, we still have room, we still reach a hundred percent funded. Five point seven five. Now you see the blue line? We've reached the maximum. So from that point forward, so basically what we're saying is, if we wanna be able to reach pretty close to full funding, five point seven five for ten years, we would have, we would have enough room in the funding plan to handle this. Which means anything below that, the contribution rate line is not gonna change. What you're gonna start to see now is a decrease in funded status. This is five point five. So you saw, the blue line stayed the same for the contribution rate, but funding levels are going down. And now, five percent. So you can see again, the, so if we're concerned about our ability to reach full funding, right now, what could limit or what could prevent us from reaching full funding are the rules imposed in the funding plan on the state contribution rate. The employer contribution rate is very, uh, is is not really subject to investment experience. It's the state contribution rate. And the other thing I'd like to just show you as well is, what we worry about is, uh, if in two thousand and forty-six, the funding plan were to just end as it's currently scheduled and nothing is done and we're not fully funded at that point, what I worry about is, are we again on a downward trend? This is what we should avoid. We did a lot of work internally, and as long as we reach about ninety percent funded by two thousand and forty-six, even if the funding plan uh, ends, we should be on a fairly stable level. So what we did internally is, we wanted to ask ourselves, how much can we afford in the funding plan? So the answer is, over a fifteen-year period, we could absorb to have six percent returns for that period and still get to a ninety percent funded. Over ten years, we'll look at five and a half percent return, and over five years, four point two five. Now, the key, just before, the key point I wanna make here is, all of this is dependent on us earning seven percent following these periods. So we're not saying that we could have, we could handle six percent for the entire period. What we're saying is that we reach full funding only if we earn seven percent from that point four. Yeah, and four point two five, correct.
Um, I have some speakers there. Lim?
Oh, thank you. So I guess in looking at this, it looks as though you you modeled it with these lower rates over a certain period of time, starting from now, over the next five-year period, ten-year and fifteen-year period. Have you looked at what would happen if these returns happen sporadically? So you still had, for example, five and a half percent returns for ten years of the funding plan, but it didn't happen consecutively and it didn't happen in the beginning?
We did, and you you end up getting a, if it happens, the later they happen toward the funding period, uh, the greater of an impact it has, because we ran out of ti- it's not that the funding plan is not working, we just ran out of time to execute our ability to increase the rates. And that's the key here, is, again, we're not saying that the funding plan is not working. If we're cons- you know, if we don't reach full funding by two thousand and forty-six, we could easily reach it as long, but we would need to have a mechanism in place to extend the life of the funding plan. But you're correct, if these happens later on down the road, uh, we may not be able to reach uh, these funding levels. Cause it's key here, we have to keep in mind that when these, these events, if they occur twenty years from now, they're gonna have a greater impact on our funding than if they occur now because of that increased volatility. So if we were to show you the same thing, but in reverse, you end up in a slightly lower funding position down the road.
Thank you.
A couple of things. First of all, going back to you saying that the constraint on reaching full funding, i- if we if we have protracted lower returns, is the ability to to increase the state rate. But wh- why isn't it also the inability to increase the employer rate? I mean, if we could increase the employer rate, we could solve the problem too, right?
It depends, not as per the current, cause right now, the employers are are paying toward their share of the unfunded liability, and the state is paying toward their their share. And right now, when we have uh, when we have investment experience below expectations, it's the state share that really increases, the employer share barely moves because of of because of the fact that most of the ac-
Because of the?
No, it's because most of the assets in the fund today are there are, if you want, earmarked toward the pre nineteen ninety benefits. So each time we don't meet our return expectations, it becomes the responsibility, it becomes mostly the responsibility of the state.
So if we have poor returns, does the the, within the limits of the the funding plan, does the employer rate go up or go down?
So right now, uh, I kinda skipped over this, but right now, if you paid attention to some of these, if you notice, the blue line goes up every time, but if you look here on the chart, that orange line, the employer, slightly goes down, opposite of where you would think it would go. So and it's, again, it's a result of the rules in the funding plan by design. Today, when we earmark how much assets is for the pre nineteen ninety benefits, when we do this calculation, it results in an asset value that exceeds what we have in the in the defined benefit fund today. Which means that the employers are sort of earmarked a negative asset value. So when we have poor performance, then their negative value becomes less negative. That's one way to look at it, meaning so that's why the contribution requirement goes down. Which is why, if you, the return we had last year, the thirteen percent, actually is now projected to result in a slight increase. Uh, it's still gonna go down, but we now think that the employer contribution rate is gonna be slightly higher than what we had originally thought in April. So it it's kind of a counterintuitive right now, it's by design of the funding plan, but the employer contribution rate, it barely moves, but when it moves, it moves in opposite direction of the state.
So, I mean, once we start talking about changing the funding plan in any way, in any way, like, like removing the limits or changing the limits on the state's contribution, seems to me we're opening up, we should be considering anything in the funding plan potentially, uh, as fiduciaries. Um, it, as a fiduciary, I find it very, very, um, disturbing that we could have, uh, our funding status go down and one of the parties to the system, the employers, see their contributions go down. That doesn't seem to make any sense to me. So I I I think as we, at least this member, as I'm thinking about what changes might need to be made, if that's what we're thinking about, and that is what you're bringing up. Um, I I I really think as fiduciaries, we can't take off the table w- what's going on with with the, with 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 everybody's contributions, even if by design, I mean, that seems like a bad dis- as a fiduciary, that's a bad design. It's a bad bad design to see contributions go down when our funding status goes down. So, um, second, se- second, and then this is, this is with respect to what we're looking at right now. So nine, I mean, we always talk about getting to a hundred percent funding. Ninety percent funding, you're saying that if we get to ninety percent funding at the end of the funding plan, and then the contributions go down, but if we continue to earn seven percent thereafter, we would then stay at ninety percent for the foreseeable future, is that?
That's correct.
Is that why ninety percent is open?
Yeah, it's, yeah, basically, so the contributions are, so the contributions would be sort of, if you want, just enough to it wouldn't be enough for us to get to eventually to a hundred percent funded, but it will also be enough to prevent a decline in funding levels. But anything below ninety percent, then the contributions wouldn't be enough to prevent a further decline. So that's, that's kinda why we picked that ninety percent funding level, was just, again, we should strive for a hundred percent.
That's what I guess I'm asking, as an actuary.
Yes.
You know, how how comfortable are you saying what we should aim for is ninety percent?
No, we should aim for a hundred percent.
Harry?
Go back to those.
Yes.
Yeah, so, um, I obviously can read the ninety percent funding by twenty forty-six is the the end zone. The six percent, five and a half percent, four and a quarter percent assumes we generate less than what we expect. So the starting date is two thousand seventeen?
So the start, yeah, so the starting date is really, we started from two thousand and sixteen valuation.
Okay.
And then we reflected the thirteen point four percent return. So we're talking about seventeen, eighteen fiscal year. So we're saying about what if in this year, we earn, let's say, six percent and six percent for the next?
Fifteen years.
Fif- fifteen years.
Okay, so let's say we do that. Let's say people who say it's gonna be low-return environment for the next decade and the equity markets have roared for the last ten years, so there's gonna be some reversion, blah, 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 right?
Yeah.
And let's say we get that six percent, it's half the portfolio. You're saying that if that happens over the next fifteen years, so in twenty thirty-three, what happens at that point? Where's the funding status?
So the funded status is still proba- so I'll I'll give you, I'll show you this example here. But so at that point, we're we're probably still gonna be in the sixties.
Okay.
Okay, but what we're saying is that beyond that point, uh, the ability of the board to increase the state contribution rate will be enough to still bring us to ninety percent funding funded by two thousand and forty-six. So, but by the end of that funding period, we're gonna be still probably just in the mid-sixties, uh, uh, funding-wise. So as long, throughout these periods, we won't see much improvement in funded status. But following that period, so what we're saying is that if we have this, to the extent we earn seven percent each year after that, combined with additional contributions coming mostly from the state.
Get to the ninety percent.
We we should get to ninety percent, but it's dependent on two things. It's dependent on us earning seven percent after.
No, I understand that. I get that, yeah. So, yeah, now that has lots of implications for another committee.
Correct. But the key here is, if we worry as a group, like, how much can we sustain? How much low returns can we sustain? This gives us a good picture.
Yeah, thank you.
So David, going back to, um, Paul's question about the ninety percent. I think that I remember during our conversations, um, about what would be a good level of funding to have. It seems to me that I remember we talked about not so much what percentage we were at, but how many years it would take to fund the unfunded liability that remained at that point. So it wasn't, it wasn't necessarily ninety percent was good if you could never amortize that unfunded liability. So, does that come into play with what you were discussing with Paul?
Yes, and again, I I think I would go back to what we said a a couple of slides ago. I think what we need to focus on is the trend.
Right.
Are we making progress? And again, we mentioned it several times in the report, the funding plan is working. In a lot of these cases, you know, if we're not a hundred percent funded by two thousand and forty-six, a a simple fix would be just to give more time to the funding plan to operate, same rules, just more time to operate. So, but again, like, the key is, are we making progress toward a hundred percent funded? And that's really.
Super. Alright, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm gonna go a little bit quicker here, just in the interest of time. We mentioned that in the report. This is kinda what Rick was referring to, uh, earlier. What if we were to have, again, one of these, one in a hundred year, or like Chris said on Wednesday, maybe it's one out of every twenty-five years? The main point we wanted to make here is, uh, if we were ever to see another big shock like we did in oh eight oh nine, which we had, if you recall, we had a negative twenty-five percent return. I hope I never see that, uh, the rest of my lifetime, but it could happen, and we need to understand that. And we need to understand that if it does, because of what I talked about earlier, the volatility kind of increasing over time, I know Chris on Wednesday said, it doesn't matter when it happens, it's going to hurt, and I agree. But to be able to recover from such event, as a percentage of payroll, contribution rates, what the contribution that will be needed to pay for it, that'll be much greater if it happens in 20 years than if it happens now. And the key here that I want you to focus is, if we were going to see such event at any point over between now and the end of the funding plan, we would be back once again in a position where we're on a downward trend if the funding plan is not extended. So if we ever see such an event, I think our number one priority should be to work toward extending the funding plan, because by the end of it, we would be again on a downward slope, so. Any questions? I know this is, again, you know, keep in mind, we're looking at, we're really focusing on the real negative stuff here, so.
I think remind us to think on the positive.
Yeah, think, and I'll, in about a few slides, I'll show you the positives so we can end on a, on a good note, okay? But that's my job. I'm here to basically remind you of the negative outcomes, so. The other thing I just want to briefly touch is, I think, Paul, you raised that question several times in the past, is earning 7% long-term is not enough to reach full funding. And Lynn, you kind of alluded to that. The path to get there could make a difference down the road. And we showed you a good example in the report, two scenarios where we earn exactly 7% long-term, one where we had bad returns in the first decade followed by good returns, and where we just reversed it. And that's kind of what we want to show you graphically here. And again, I just want you to focus on the top left. We're showing you first the path where we have the bad returns first, followed by the good returns, and next, the good returns followed by the bad. And in the end, we, although we earn exactly 7%, we end up about, almost the difference in funded level at the end is about 10%. So just something to keep in mind that, you know, we could be sitting here 29 years from now, asking ourselves, why aren't we 100% funded? We earn exactly 7%. The path matters. So that's just something to keep in mind, because of the increased volatility, if the poor returns tend to occur later in the funding period, it will have an impact at the end. So just something to keep in mind that earning 7% is not always, I know we want this, but we're just going to keep that in mind. So now, focusing on the positive, I just want you to remind, so we've been kind of looking at just what if these events occur, so we've kind of been focusing on negative events. In the report, we had a section that talked about a, kind of, a probability-based approach. What we basically did is we, we did like over 5,000 simulations of possible futures is what we did. We actually worked with our investment staff closely on this. As you know, as part of the business plan this year was to create an asset liability management team internally, which we did. We've got ourselves, we have staff from the investment office and also staff from Robbins' area. We've been meeting regularly and to exchange ideas, make sure we work together, and the investment staff had a key part in a lot of the work that we did. And so what we did is, we, if you look at these simulations, is that's a good way to see if the funding plan works. And what I want you to do here is just focus on the right. The blue bar is our current funding structure, orange is if the funding plan had not passed. And all I want you to focus here is at the end, we ask ourselves, in all of these simulations, how many times did we reach full funding? And in almost 70% of those simulations, 70% of the time, the funding plan was a success. We reached full funding. And you see before that probability was less than 30%. So the funding plan is working. You know, the issue is, you know, I know I painted kind of a darker picture, but what we've been focusing on are kind of the, the other 30% where we did not reach full funding. So, but if you're, you know, if you're trying to, you know, if you look at the probability, 70% is high. So the funding plan is working. And when we look at the opposite, again, me, what I worry, what we should worry about are the two sets of bars on the right, is there a chance we're going to run out of money again? And with the funding plan, that chance has been almost eliminated. Before, it was almost a 50-50 chance we were going to run out of money. So, that's why, so let's keep in mind, the funding plan is working. Tweaks could be made to improve its chance of success, but it is working. I think it's fitting that you started the meeting talking about you signed 22 letters.
I appreciate that.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate it. And the other thing I want to mention is, last year, the decision you made to adopt the new actual assumption was key, because we have very conservative assumptions right now. We not only reflected the fact that members are living longer, but we've built in into the funding of our system an ongoing improvement in life expectancy, which 10 years ago, almost no pension fund in the U.S. was funding this way, so it was great. And what we wanted to show you again is, what if we were to see improvements in life expectancy greater than what we assume? How much could we afford in the funding plan? And I'll go quick here, so, before I show you this. So today, a typical female teacher that retired at age 62 is expected to collect 28 years of benefits, live until age 90, okay? So today, they live, I think if you look at the most recent data we have, they live until about age 88. So the assumption you made is we've built in, if you want, a two-year margin in it. And what we wanted to see is, what if instead of living to 90, they live to 92, 94, 96? What is that going to do to the funding plan? And again, I want you to focus on one thing. Once again, it's the state contribution rate that is impacted the most by this. So again, this is our baseline. I just want you once again to focus on the blue line at the bottom. I'm going to go now showing you 92. You can see, now we have enough room, we will have enough room to handle this. Now, what if there was a typical member who was going to live until 94? Now you can see, 94 is where we sort of start to reach the end of our funding plan, where we ran out of room. 96, you can see now, the blue line stayed the same, and our funding levels would reach about 86% by 2046. So you can see, and again, these are, it would take drastic improvement in life expectancy. Over the last century, improvements have been about 1% per year. What we're talking about here is, was a 2% per year, 3% or 4% per year. So to hit that 96, we would need to see improvements four times higher than what they've been historically. So we're not saying it's not impossible, but it's probably, has a very likelihood of happening. So I think when you look at longevity, unless there's a drastic change, especially in the ability of delaying aging, for example, we should have enough room in the funding plan. And with this, the last thing I wanted to mention was, kind of, the other risk that sometime is, I would say, overlooked. Probably one of the key assumption that not much people pay attention as part of the funding of the plan, is the fact that we assume that our active membership is going to remain stable over time. And because we collect contributions as a percentage of payroll, if we were going to start to see a decline in membership, it could prevent you as a board from setting the contribution rates to the level they need to be to eliminate the unfunded liability. So what we sort of ask ourselves at a report is, how much can we, you know, how much could we absorb so that we could still reach full funding? And the answer was, again, this is our baseline scenario. We looked at it and we said, over five years, we would be able to sustain, if you want, a 3% decline per year, so about 62,000 decline in active membership, we would still be able to reach full funding. If we had a 5% decline per year, we would get to about 90% funded. And over a 10-year period, if we were going to have like a 3% decrease per year, so about 115,000 teachers, we would still reach about 90% funded. So the key here is, you know, for us, like, when we look at it, you know, we see the risks, you know, I know, next, we're going to talk about charter schools. You know, the fact that, that they have a choice whether to elect or not to elect CalSTRS could, and it has a little bit, we'll show you after, could result in less members in our system. Sometime I worry a little bit about technology advancement, maybe not at the K through 12, but I think someone could make the case that maybe at community college level, is technology going to result later in larger class sizes? That's a possibility. You know, is that, you know, we haven't seen any of this, maybe it's not a near threat, but it could potentially slightly reduce membership. What we've seen is historically was budget issues at the state level could have an impact, because what if we go back to larger class sizes again, resulting in less active members? Those are all the things we have to keep an eye on. And the key point I want to make here is that, if we were to ever see a decline in membership, now for the first time, we run into issues on the employer side. It's the employer contribution rate for which, it's their share of the unfunded liability that we would have a hard time to eliminate. So that's the thing to keep in mind. So main message so far for you today is, we've talked about investment risk, it's on the employer side that really the, the impact is felt. Longevity risk, same thing, sorry, on the state side. So investment and longevity, state side. If we see declines in membership, it's the opposite, it's the employer side. So with this, I kind of want, just wanted to start the discussion with you. 2019 is when we are scheduled to go back to the legislature on the progress of our funding plan. So what we've been doing internally is, we have been looking at, you know, should changes be made that maybe would, could increase the likelihood of, you know, to strengthen the plan, increase the chance of success? We're still looking at things, and right now, what we had in mind was to potentially come back to you maybe sometime next year, maybe in July, to start the discussion as to, should we, when we report back to the legislature, consider starting the discussion over possible tweaks to strengthen the funding plan? Again, the funding plan is working as designed, but as we showed you, there could be situations where we may need more room in the funding plan to reach full funding. And then, if there's a concern among the board about, you know, investment risk, what should we do? This is just a reminder that we can start to have those discussions as we start the asset allocation study process, which I think will be coming to you starting, I think the plan right now is to complete the process by the fall of 2019. So that process is slowly starting internally as well. So I've thrown a lot of information at you today. I thank you for your patience. And if you have any more questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Arina.
Thank you. I very much appreciate the report. I think it's fantastic and I, I'm glad to see it for a second year, and I think it will be very instructive to see it regularly. The one thing that I would like to see, in particular in the written part of the report, not the presentation today, is when you get into the conclusion and kind of possible options, I think it is missing a little bit of the context of how the funding plan was developed and the, kind of, the principle of shared responsibility that was a part of achieving the plan. So the shared responsibility of the teachers who were asked to commit additional contributions, the state and the employers. And so I think going forward, you need to constantly remind everyone what the plan was.
How we got there.
How we got there, because you're going to lose the memory of the folks who participated in it. And so I think that context, to keep that as part of the written
Critical.
document is important in the report that goes to the legislature. And then also, I think in terms of the options that are laid out, that the universe of options really should be unlimited in the discussion. Everything should be on the table as you're talking with the board and with the legislature, because this is just a statutory framework. It could be changed at any time, and we should be reinforcing that any point along the path that we need to make changes to make it more solid, we should do that. And I think, I came at a time when everyone knew there was a problem and we needed a funding plan to address it, but I'm well aware of how long it took to persuade the legislature to act. And so I think that, to the extent that you can bring people along every year to the notion that you can step in and make changes is a good thing, instead of getting people in this idea that, well, they have this 30-year funding plan and wait until there's a crisis. I think that that's something that would be very important to avoid, is getting too far into the plan before deciding to make a change. So all options should be on the table, and that kind of living concept is what I would really encourage to consider in the written material going forward.
Arina, I think you're absolutely right. This, it was getting to the crisis point, and it was really, really difficult, and it was a bitter pill to swallow. I don't think we can afford to wait till it's a crisis again and try to get people to swallow again. Paul?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with this, because I think the message is that the way in which we deal with risk is the authority that is in the current funding plan for the board to raise contribution rates. And those are mostly on the state. But at some point, the ability to respond isn't, isn't great enough. We can only increase the state rate by a certain amount every year. We, there's a limit to how much we can increase the state rate. And we don't want to be back in a situation where this board realizes something has to be done, but we don't have the power to do it because we have to go to the legislature, and it takes 10 years to convince them, and by that time, we're back in a crisis situation. So I do think that what we need to look at is ways in which to increase the authority of this board to respond. There's, there are, there's authority in the law now. There are limits. There's limits to what this board can do, to what this board can do in terms of state rates, in terms of employer rates, in terms of member rates. I'm not suggesting that we would go to the legislature and say, give us full authority with no constraints. But what the message here is, is we need greater flexibility, and we probably need greater flexibility. We can't do it with member rates, because as you said, members don't have the responsibility to pay off the unfunded liability. But we need, we need, in some way or another, through a combination of greater authority with respect to either state rates or employer rates or both, the ability to respond. And I think that, as Arina said, all options should be on the table, other than, give us full authority to do anything we want, because that's not going to happen. But within, you know, reasonable constraints, I think we need, need to consider additions to the authority of this board.
That's the last speaker. I'm going to throw my two cents into, David. I think one of the things that we need to look at, you know, we've spoken this morning about what all should we put in it as a possible recommendation? And all we've talked about is what we might need to do to increase it. I think we also need to think about what we need to do to protect it, to make sure that it can't be changed in a negative manner between here and there also. And I think that we need to make sure that we talk to our constituency groups, we talk to our stakeholders, we need to have, we desperately needed them for partners to get this through. We're going to have to have them to move forward with any recommendations that we have, and I think even protecting it would be just as important as trying to move something forward in the future. All righty. We have statements from the public, it looks like. Jennifer?
Good morning, Jennifer. California Teachers Association, very much appreciate the conversation, the sobering conversation that you're having on this, and particularly appreciate Arina's comments, because context is very important. It was consistently noted throughout the report, and then you'll also know in additional items later on today on your agenda, the drumming of the fact that the board does not have authority to change contribution rates is regularly integrated into this item as well as a number of other items. And there's a reason, and it's because the legislature, as was noted, and the governor and their dance, set those rates. So I think it's very important to make sure that that is included regularly, so that those that are not familiar with the history and not familiar with the process understand, because that's also important for stakeholders and constituents to also understand for the future. What that means is, if you need to make a change, you go to the legislature and you make that change, because I don't believe that point was really made clear in the item, and I just want to ensure that those that aren't familiar understand that there is a mechanism and a process to have that discussion. We agree with you, Paul. It's frustrating if it takes quite a long time. We agree with you, Paul, it's frustrating if it takes quite a long time. But at the end, it's the legislature and governor that bear that responsibility. So, if that might be able to be included in the future, that would be helpful. And then the only other issue that I would point in, because the item is about funding levels and risks, and since you're talking about ultimately a report that you're going to give to the legislature, I might include other fiscal risks and fiscal threats, which also includes some of the divestment discussions that the legislature has been having. You might consider adding some context for future items on divestment. So, for example, if the legislature wanted to move on divestment issue A, B, or C, perhaps include in the report, and this would be the impact that it could have on funding. I would also encourage you, when you include that information, to also impact, include potential impacts on your employee contribution rates, particularly the 2 at 62. While there isn't the direct link, if you fall short on funding because of divestment and that changes the normal contribution rate, you then can have an impact on what your members are paying, because this is very complicated, and most, most members and most legislators and staff absolutely don't understand. So, the more information you can include to create context, the more helpful it's going to be to have a discussion if you need to recommend changes in the future.
You know, Jennifer, Arina, and you do have a really solid point of how many people get us confused with CalPERS, who does have contribution rate-setting authority, and how difficult that was to educate the legislature, that how different we actually were. So, I think that is a good point. All righty, anything further? Hi.
Hello.
Go ahead and pick up the mic if you need to. There you go.
Hi, thank you. This is Derek Lennox, on behalf of the School Employers Association of California, as well as the Small School Districts Association. Very much appreciate this item and all the work that your staff did to help brief us and make sure that school employers were a part of the conversation and understood what would be presented here today. I want to express appreciation for some of the comments made by the board members, including, you know, working with stakeholders to make sure that when we go back to the legislature, if it should become necessary, that we do involve all of our stakeholder partners, because much like you are discussing these issues here today, I can assure you that whenever we go out to our school district clients and members, it's one of the number one, or two, or three issues that we hear about, CalSTRS and CalPERS, and making sure that we have a sustainable system going forward. So, we look forward to being a partner with you on that. I also very much appreciate the comment made by board member Dylan, respecting that, you know, when we look at tweaks that could improve the full funding plan, we should also remind the legislature and others of the things that are working and that we want to protect. Because school employers, we very much appreciate the full funding plan, in particular, the elements that protect us from extreme volatility on the market side. That's a huge deal for us. Nobody likes going to 19.1%. But at the same time, our situation is significantly better than what we see in some of our other pension plans, such as on CalPERS, where we bear more of the costs and liabilities of the extremes in the investment market. So, I think that there are a lot of things that are working, and we want to be a part of helping to emphasize that with our stakeholder partners and legislative partners across the river. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All righty, any further comment from the board? Thank you very much, David. Jordan, Rick?
So, there's the charter school issue, so we're going to...
So, David doesn't get to go anywhere?
Yeah, we're going to abandon David, because there's going to be other...
Okay.